Good evening, everyone, and thanks for your attention. Everybody in the room got really quiet really fast. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the October 14th regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I hope everyone's enjoying the nice, beautiful summer weather we've had this last week. And as is customary, we hold a moment of silence. And we just ask that we all kind of settle and center ourselves as we prepare for the business ahead for a few moments of silence. Thank you. And now let us recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
No special actions. I would note before we get into our first round of public comment that Mr. Davis is out of town and cannot join us tonight. So let us get into our first round of public comment. Anyone wishing to give a comment should come to the microphone. Please let us know what part of the township you live in. And you might want to turn on the microphone there, little button. You got it.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Zolfo. That's Z-O-L-F-O. I was a resident in Newtown for 19 years, but I am no longer. I am over in Lower Mayfield Township. I was coming with a comment related to a request for a traffic study. It's something that I would never have noticed if I still lived here in Newtown, but I frequently have business where I have to cross over Route 332 and approach the Newtown Business Commons. And I know how much it is a goal of this organization to encourage more businesses to move into that area. And the four-way stop at Penn's Trail and Pheasant Run, I guess it is, is a menace during rush hour. The traffic is so bad that you can sometimes be on the other side of 332 and not be able to go straight across at a green light because it's backed up so much. You can also be on 332 trying to turn right onto Penn's Trail and not be able to make the turn and just be backed up on 332. So my thought was to request a traffic study because I know that there are some areas that have that same kind of congestion where they put in lights that are blinkers for most of the day, but that are actually directional during the rush hours. And that's my request. Thank you.
What are the, excuse me, what are the two streets, Penn's Trail?
It's Penn's Trail and Pheasant Run.
Pheasant Run.
Now, I should note, it's entirely possible that some of the congestion is because there's a camp at one of the facilities right there, so there's a lot of people turning left. But it's just one of those four-way stops where you get a person who's uncertain of what's going on and it just, I mean, it backs up onto the highway.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the first round of public comment? Seeing none, we'll go right ahead. There's no minor approvals this evening, but we do have reports from committees and boards. Planning Commission, Peggy Driscoll.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give you a synopsis of our August 6 meeting. We had three conditional uses, first being Flourish Cafe at 2819 South Eagle Road. Attorney Ed Murphy represented the applicant. Sweet Rhythm Bakery doing business as the Flourish Cafe for conditional use approval for uses E5 and E6, an eating place and an eating place takeout at the location of the former KO Restaurant in the village at Newtown. The Commission recommended that the board approve this conditional use, subject to the condition that it complies with the review letter of CKS Engineering dated July 26. Next, we had Love and Honey Fried Chicken at 2820 South Eagle Road. Mr. Murphy also represented this applicant. MJ and TS Enterprises doing business as Love and Honey Chicken for conditional use approval for uses E5 and E6, eating place and eating place takeout at the location formerly housing Holga's at the village in Newtown. The applicant indicated that the use will primarily be takeout with very limited seating. The Commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve this use, subject to compliance with the CKS review letter dated July 25. And lastly, we had Golden Girl at 2836 South Eagle Road. Mr. Murphy also represented this applicant. Golden Girl Fitness doing businesses Body Rock Newtown for conditional use approval for a use C6, an athletic facility at the former Newtown bookstore location. This is a Pilates studio. The Commission recommended that the board approve this use, subject to compliance with the CKS review letter dated July 26. And lastly, we had the JMZO amendment for the LIOLI overlay. This amendment has been reviewed numerous times by the Commission and the board. It has been revised so that all the new uses added to the zoning district are by conditional use, not by right. The members recommend that the board forward this amendment to our joint or partners for adoption. And that was all we had. Any questions?
Any questions for Peggy? I did note that Capital Gru will soon be opening.
In a few weeks, in, I believe, the second week in September.
And I believe we had a conversation about the possibility, looking into whether they have valet parking. I think I remember that, a discussion that they were going to provide valet parking.
Oh, we're hoping so. We just, you know, we had, you were at the meeting, we had a long discussion about parking over at the center. I think the only viable spot with them would be the Rothman Building, which is currently empty for now, because now we have another restaurant going in the former KO. When KO was there, it was Pier One there, and then the building was empty for quite a while, so parking wasn't an issue. But as always, I mean, we all live here, we all hear from residents, we know the parking is an issue there. Dennis, you were at the meeting, we also discussed, the employee parking seems to be an issue, not only with the restaurants over there, but even the retail does a business over there with Ulta. Now we have Bath &amp; Body Works there, Lululemon. I mean, they're all doing well. You know, we were happy that they're doing well, but, you know, we did note that there are, there are a lot of parking spots behind McCaffrey's.
I think at the meeting you said there were 85 behind McCaffrey's and all the way around.
Yeah, there's quite a few back there. And from McCaffrey's all the way around the back to, down to Five Guys. And I know a lot of the, I mean, we hear members of the Planning Commission that a lot of the employees are parking in the McCaffrey's lot. And maybe the township can reach out to some of the businesses there. I mean, even somebody like the Iron Hill, they, you know, it's a big place. They have maybe sometimes 20 to 30 employees on it at night. It's very busy there. It's, I mean, they're doing good.
Yes. I did contact Mr. Lewis, and he contacted the codes officer, and they did get in contact with Bricksmore about having employees park behind the building.
There, and also in front of Mattress Firm, there's parking there. I know people don't like to walk, but there are some options that maybe if we, you know, can get, I mean, with all the restaurants in there, we're looking at maybe 16 employees that are parking cars, so.
Okay.
Something we can work on.
Yes, we'll continue at our next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. And that brings us to board members. I have three items, just to mention real briefly. I attended the Newtown Fire Association monthly meeting the last Monday in July. I attended, Ms. Snyder and I attended a fire services agreement meeting with the borough where calculating the amount they will owe us for fire services in 2025. And we're in the middle of doing that. And then lastly, I attended, I believe it was July 24th, a Blue Zones presentation. And this is something that's been documented. Netflix did a documentary series on Blue Zones, and it's about where longevity hotspots around the world. And they've expanded it to, from five original spots to circling the globe. They came to do a study in Bucks County. We received a grant to do the study and have them come in and see what resources we have to offer, but also how to encourage people to follow some of the power nine, which are lifestyle changes, diet, exercise, purpose, being part of a group socially, all factors that seem to have factored in worldwide into people living longer, more productive lives. So you might hear more about that. I just thought it was very interesting. That's all I have. Madam Secretary, Madam Vice Chair.
Along with our monthly EAC meeting, which we finally are back to after most of the summer being over, I also attended the fire services meeting. And the only other thing I'd like to add is the sewer authority meeting. And I think you're going to hear a lot about the sewer authority meeting and details in the months to come, and we'll be talking more about that later. Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Secretary-Treasurer.
The only thing I have to report this weekend, my wife and I attended the Bethlehem Music Fest and saw ZZ Top live. Pretty cool.
Mr. Calabro.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. I have to turn the page here. That brings us to our public hearing. And Mr. Sander, can you lead us?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Recall that the board opened a public hearing several meetings ago to consider enactment of the LIOLI overlay district ordinance amendment to the joint municipal zoning ordinance. At that first hearing, the hearing was, the ordinance was tabled. At a subsequent meeting, it was not taken off the table. Now we're back for our next meeting following, and it would be appropriate for the board to initially consider a motion removing the ordinance and the public hearing from the table so that they can continue.
Do we have that motion to take this off the table?
So moved.
And we have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Solicitor, is it appropriate for public comment on this?
No, this is a procedural issue.
I thought, I remembered that. Seeing no questions, all in favor of taking this off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-1, so now we can.
It is off the table. It is now back before the board. This is the continuation of a public hearing to consider the enactment of the LIOLI overlay district amendment to the joint municipal zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the JMZO to establish the LIOLI overlay district.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, very good.
With regard to the motion, the second, Mr. Chairman, that's great. It would be appropriate for any board discussion, and then we would ask for public comment.
Absolutely. Just go in there. You beat me to it. Questions from the board?
I have some questions. I note that the representatives in the Bucks County Planning Commission here, which are the primary authors of this overlay, is that correct?
Jeremy Stoff and Lisa Wolf are here.
And they're willing to answer questions, I assume. And I did send you a couple of questions I had this afternoon. I'm concerned about the residential density. And it's mentioned in this overlay that the maximum density can be 20 units per acre, something like that. Whereas I note that the Bucks County Planning Commission really opposed another development in town that had 20, it started off with 20 units per acre, and you wrote a criticism saying that was much not appropriate because the maximum density in Newtown is about three or so housing units per acre. And I note that many people on the Planning Commission were opposed to that kind of density. So I'm just curious as to why you have one view of density in one area and another view of density in the commons area. Can you explain your thinking there?
Mr. Chair, is this the end of board members' comments? I thought that was first.
Well.
And then you're going to have them come in.
Okay. When we have other board members' comments, that way you can address them all at the same time.
Well, no, I don't have any. I'm just wondering if Mr. Mack is.
No, I have another, I could go on if that's how you want to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that's one question or concern that I had. The other was, I find this was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, which the Bucks County Planning Commission also authored. And according to the comprehensive plan, the land currently zoned and available in the joint residential zoning district is more than adequate to accommodate future development between now and 2030, even assuming that only a portion of the districts are used for development. So I'm curious as to if the comprehensive plan says we have enough already on the current zoning, enough space on the current zoning for housing, why it is necessary to have additional housing allowed in the commons area, which will add to traffic and congestion. And so, you know, there's some density issues that I have and some inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. I mean, I'm just wondering why we have a comprehensive plan and we're not, and we're already, before it's even, I think it's might even finally approved, we're asking to make more housing development in the township and other areas, changing the zoning just for that. I noticed that there's going to be, in the area that's under consideration here in terms of housing, you're talking about mixed use and where there's commercial space on the bottom and apartments on the top, you were very, the Commission was very adamant about that from way in the beginning, but I just sort of recall that this overlay never really, it didn't start off including apartment use. It had, the plan was to help businesses in this area. And I don't see how having apartments in that area helps businesses. I can see the retail, we talked about, helping businesses because there's, there used to be maybe 15,000 employees there, and I'm sure 80% of them could not afford the type of housing that would be developed there. But they would be able to use the retails, like little delis or dog grooming or whatever, dry cleaning, that sort of thing, have access to. And I find that is really what I think is important in developing this overlay. But you're going to have people who currently own property in that area going to want to develop high-density housing. I know Mr. Worthington also had plans for land that he has across from Penn's Trail, I guess it is. I'm not sure what street that is there, across from his athletic facility. He owns a big plot of land there. And some time ago, when I first became a supervisor, he had a plan for this, it was like a five-story apartment complex with barbecues in the center and costing a lot of money. And as you know, I think he was involved in trying to get apartment, a huge apartment building located where the Newtown Sewer Authority wants to, has condemned the land. And so now, he's got, he borrowed a lot of money, he's got to develop somewhere. And I think what's going to happen is you're going to see a lot more of that kind of development in that area if we allow this overlay to go through as it is. So my questions to you were just about how come the density, you have a different opinion of density from one area to another, and how come this seems to be contrary to what you said in the comprehensive plan?
Before you start, Jeremy, I'll just point out that the Planning Commission did recommend that we adopt this ordinance and send it through. Any other comments from the board before Jared McGee? You've got the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy Stoff, Bucks County Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mack, for your comments. It's a lot there, so I'll try to work my way through it as best I can, along with Lisa, too. So to start off, I think, from the beginning of the process, when we were engaged or approached by the township, I think you are right that one of the initial concerns was to provide sort of these kind of service-oriented uses that could help complement the businesses, like a laundromat and things like that. But then through our conversations, it became pretty clear to us, from a planning perspective, that it made sense to include some type of residential use if the township wanted to see, you know, real revitalization of this commons area. And from our perspective, the reason for that was for sustaining the businesses, you really did need to have more foot traffic there. And so the residential component would allow for that. So then the question became kind of, how do we want to envision this residential component? And to us, it made sense to include it as kind of a mixed-use idea. So not, we didn't want to propose anything that was, you know, standalone residential, nothing that was high-density standalone residential. We wanted to include, you know, mixed-use residential only. And so from that, we then started to think about what did we want the density to look like? And from our kind of knowledge and experience in seeing a lot of these mixed-use projects, we have come to understand that projects of less than really like 100 units are almost never financially viable for developers to build. And so for that reason, you kind of, in order to reach that 100-unit number approximately, it becomes really hard with anything less than 20 dwelling units per acre, especially when you take into account, you know, the other area and dimensional requirements that we laid out, the parking requirements, and probably most significantly, the non-residential use requirement, which we wrote in, which is to require 500 square unit, square feet of non-residential space per 10 residential units. So all of these things combined, just, you know, the calculations come out, that 20 dwelling units per acre made sense. And then also, 20 dwelling units per acre is consistent with the permitted density in some of the neighboring Bucks municipalities where we've seen these types of mixed-use developments come about. So in Dublin Borough, with Dublin Town Center is one example, or the Butler Square Apartments in New Britton Township, those are two examples where the density is around that 20, 20 units per acre figure. So that's.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I mean, the other project that I was talking about was the corners at Newtown, which I believe started off, or currently is, 100 units. And that's something you opposed because you thought it was too much density, so.
It was higher than 100 units.
Yeah, Lisa, you should.
But it's down, down to what, 117, 120? I don't know.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, Lisa Wolf, Bucks County Planning Commission. I'll just add that in terms of the other proposal that you're mentioning, John, we reviewed that in 2023, so we haven't seen, if it's been revised, we haven't gotten a revised amendment. But at the time we reviewed that amendment, the density proposal was for 35 dwelling units per acre, so it was higher than the 20 acres. So that's why we had the comment. And the comment isn't saying that it's bad necessarily, it's just pointing out the density in the surrounding districts and recommending that the township officials determine if that's, if that's the direction they wanted to go for the Town Center District. The TC District is the district right now that that site is in. And that district, the TC District, is more commercial oriented or intended, has been intended to be more commercial oriented, so there's not even a density, I believe, in the zoning ordinance for that district. I guess, in terms of, you had another question regarding the comprehensive plan, it says that there are sufficient units. And I don't think there's any, anywhere that, that we pulled from that says more units are needed. It was more just looking at the project, like an overview of what, you know, we felt would make it more successful when developers come in to redevelop the area. So I don't, I don't really see a conflict there because we're not saying that you need more units, but in terms of making the mixed use, that district, the mixed use to be successful in that district, that's what we determined.
But, but you say in the comprehensive plan, the land currently zoned and available in the joint, joint's residential zoning districts is more than adequate to accommodate future development between now and 2030. So I have, to me, that seems like, well, we don't have to change the zoning, and here you are changing the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, that, that language doesn't preclude more, you know, more housing being constructed. I think there can be a variety of other reasons why it makes sense to build more, you know, to allow for more density in certain areas, given certain conditions. And I think, you know, we, I just want to emphasize throughout all of this that we, you know, we've worked in concert with the Planning Commission throughout all of this. And we, we were instructed to put together something that envisioned the commons in a way that did allow for more residential, and, you know, that's what we, that's what we did.
And if we get, as a township, we get plans for apartment complexes, this is someplace we can indicate for it to go.
Exactly, yeah.
That we've, that we're halfway happy with.
Right. As long as there's a mixed-use component to it, yeah.
Because at some point, we're going to get a plan that's going to request, and we have to have someplace to have them go. So that's, that's my point. Any other comments from the board?
I just have one for the solicitor. If by chance this overlay ordinance were not to go through, could the township be challenged in regards to if someone wanted to come in? could the, could the township be challenged in regards to if someone wanted to come in and build an apartment complex with some mixed use? Since we're not going to have that, just if we deny this, can we, can we be challenged by developers?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And then what would happen in that case?
Well.
How much control would we have in that case?
Very little. Obviously, you would defend the current ordinance, but the strengthens, this proposed ordinance strengthens the current zoning ordinance by providing for a more traditional apartment use, which I think sort of cuts off the ability of developers to say, you don't provide for apartments. So I, I think it strengthens the ordinance and would allow us to better defend a challenge.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was saying. You just said it more plainly. Thank you.
So the idea then is to give way to developers and make sure we provide everything we possibly can do to make it easy for developers to build high-density housing in Newtown. I think that's what you guys are really saying.
I don't think anyone says make it easy because we still have control if this ordinance goes through. We still have the last right of refusal on any developer that comes in and does something that we do not approve. So it's not like we're giving carte blanche to a developer coming in and putting the shovels in ground and building these monstrosities that you envisioned. We have control to, under, under land development, tell them what we want them to do and what we don't want them to do. And they have to follow our requests. So that, that term of giving it away is an inaccurate term. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's true.
Well, we already have a use-for-garden apartment, so we have a use-for-apartments, a zoning ordinance for garden apartments. And I note that the, one of the developers I was talking about, where the sewer authority has taken over their land, still said, oh, well, you don't have the type of apartment building we want to build.
That's correct.
Then anybody, and then somebody comes along with a garage core apartment building. Well, you don't have zoning for garage core apartment buildings. Then somebody comes along, well, you don't have an ordinance for skyscraper apartment building. You know, it could be anything.
Absolutely. Could be. That's what developers are out there doing.
We could still be sued by developers no matter what the hell.
Yes, we can.
So I don't think passing something like this just to a swash, whatever the word is, to prevent us from being sued, we always get sued and we always give in. And, you know, that's what they know. They know that. They, they got the book from Wawa and now, you know, we're, we're stuck with it.
Well, may I point out that in the solicitor's agenda items, there's a way to strengthen this. There's an amendment that we're proposing to strengthen this to go from by right, developer by right, development by right, to conditional use, which gives us more say, so.
So let me ask you a question. Is the conditional use, is that what we're voting on here?
Not, not yet.
No, we're not voting on that. We're voting on to pass this to the jointure with the current language, which is by right. Is that correct?
Until we.
Until we, you're saying, just saying that you, somebody's going to go to the jointure and say, change this to conditional use. Is that the plan?
We already have. That process is already in motion. You authorized that in your, your last meeting.
So we submitted to the jointure already a request to change this?
Correct.
Yes, this would, this would be a better safe-than-sorry situation. In the meantime, between the time that this ordinance is passed and the amendment is passed, it might be a month or two, and we would rather be safe.
I get it. But is it guaranteed that the jointure will pass, change, make the changes to conditional use? Is that a guarantee?
No.
You're on.
Sorry, I would just like to add something. The districts that are involved, the light industrial and the office light industrial, those districts, while Newtown plans with Upper Mayfield and Wrightstown, the three communities, those two districts are only in Newtown Township. So I can't say that they're definitely, I can't make any guarantees.
That's why I answered the question the way I did.
Yes, yes, but I just want to point out that those two districts only fall in, in Newtown Township.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
In regards to these two districts, if we were not to pass this and, and strengthen the LI, OLI, would that leave it open that Wrightstown and Upper Mayfield will be susceptible to an LI and OLI district?
Well, I think, you know, they do permit, they do have industrial districts. Wrightstown has the quarry districts as well. So the uses are more or less shared in terms of how they're permitted.
But the quarry, the quarry district is a requirement that makes the jointure the jointure because it's in one of the townships. Nothing can actually be done in the quarry. They're not going to build houses in the quarry district or put, or retail. What I'm, what I'm saying is, why would they be opposed to passing this ordinance if it still benefits them for it to be in Newtown Township? As opposed to them having to establish these districts in their township and opening it up to them to have more businesses and density and everything where, where it's being done? And that was the, that was the main purpose of the jointure, was Newtown Township to absorb the business district. That's why we have one and the density. And that's why they have the Rock Quarry and I believe the, the Watershed, I believe, or something that comes through. I have no idea.
That's Upper Mayfield. Upper Mayfield is the watershed for the jointure.
But I'm saying, all those three combined townships fulfills all this as if we were one big township as the jointure. Is that correct?
Right. Yes, in, in a certain sense. Yes, you're right.
Okay. So again, I wouldn't see them not wanting to pass this because it's in their best interest to pass it. I mean, I'm not predicting it, but if they were not to pass it, one day they're going to need something passed and it'll get to this board. And it's quid, quid pro quo, is that the terminology? And I think that, that's what they would have to consider in regards to this ordinance coming to their desk.
I think the percentage would be high, but.
Well, irregardless of that, what we are being asked to do is to send on to the jointure a overlay that includes by right. And I don't know what the jointure will do, but this is what we're voting on. Why don't we vote, why don't we vote to change it and have it, have them change it? And then come back and we vote on the right thing that we want.
Solicitor, would you like to take that?
Sure. You, you've already authorized the drafting of an ordinance to amend the, the ordinance that you're considering tonight, to change it from by right to conditional use. That's been drafted. It's been sent to the jointure. It's already been distributed to the municipalities. And you heard the planning commission report tonight from your own planning commission that said they recommend that you send it back to the jointure to authorize advertisements. It's been fast-tracked. That comes up later on the, tonight's agenda. I understand, John, your, your point. Why don't, why are we dealing with this ordinance when we're only going to have to deal with the conditional use ordinance in a month or two? And the, the answer is that by enacting this ordinance, you provide a better layer of defense against a challenge to situate apartments anywhere in the township because you're limiting them to the LI, OLI district. So the worst thing that can happen as a result of enacting the ordinance that you're considering right now is that somebody comes in with a by-right apartment plan for the LI or OLI district, and you've got to handle it. You still have land development control, but you don't have conditional use control until the ordinance is enacted in a month or two, whenever we get it advertised for a public hearing.
Let me ask further. With the conditional use, say that goes through and somebody comes in and wants to build a high-density apartment building, but without commercial space on it. And they say, we want a variance to allow us just to have apartments, no commercial space because we don't believe any business is going to come in there now because business is already doing bad over there. They don't think it's going to be a good idea. What happens then?
They file an application to the zoning hearing board for a.
The zoning hearing board is completely out of our control and can give them that variance. And therefore, we would have a big apartment building, maybe, without any commercial space, without improving the commercial aspect of that area, so.
Anybody can ask for a use variance for whatever they want to right now, whether we enact this ordinance or not. It happens sometimes. This board has sent us to oppose certain things that it has not particularly agreed with. And they have a long road to hoe if they are going to ask for a use variance that this board is opposed to.
I would like to open it up to public comment. I think that's appropriate at this time.
Yes, if the board has, has done its comments, yeah.
Please don't forget to state your name and where you live.
Hello, Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident since 1999. And I've lived in the township for quite a number of years. And I've seen different changes happen, as I've said before to some of you folks, where the Acme used to be on Sycamore Street and it moved over to Durham Road, a little bypass there. So I've seen the changes happen in Newtown to try to better Newtown, to try to help, you know, the businesses and the residents have a better grocery store, as an example. But in the last two, three years, we have seen different developments continuously coming in here. DeLuca, Toll Brothers, Wawa, come right in here and get whatever they want. And I thought some of you people, when you ran for office, you said, I'm for overdevelopment, stopping that. Or I'm for the environment, or I'm for bettering the community. And every single time, something like this comes out. There's tons of residents here who scream and yell and complain of the issues and problems that are a problem with that area or that they don't want that to be there for many different reasons. The, you know, the sewer systems were bad on Twining Bridge Road. And how are we going to have all these homes and fix the sewer problem? Or the traffic that's going to be developed when we have Wawa down on Lower Silver Lake Road, when we have, when we have the farm up the road, Shady Brook Farms doing the Halloween or the Christmas events that they have, all the extra traffic. We even had a lady here today say, who, nobody even knows who she was. She used to live in the area, moved, said how much problem we have with traffic. And maybe it's a daycare system without even having any buildings built or conditional uses for apartment buildings or anything even settled right now. We already have traffic issues. There are people that are crying and complaining that don't come here for whatever reason, saying that the traffic on 413 is horrendous and terrible. And we keep on developing and building and building. And every inch, like Ben Salem, Feasterville, Trevoes do, every inch that they can find a spot to put a business, that's what they do. And people don't want this. We don't want more traffic. We don't want more congestion. Is it because we want more taxes? We want to put these things in there because we want to spend our money? I thought we're supposed to help the community in what's better for everybody, not just what certain people decide to want. We look up to the community leaders who are in the township, in the borough, to be our spokesperson for what we want, what we want to have happen to the township. We can't speak. We can't tell this developer no. We elect you guys in the hope and pray that you guys are going to represent us. And to me, it seems like every time people come in here, it's not represented. We'll just be screaming and yelling. And then at the end of the day, it's like, oh, we tried, we did what we could. It's, it is what it is. And I wish that it would show the residents, like myself, that we're trying to stop this. We're trying to not have high-rise apartments with three hundred cars parked around there, and the traffic's going to be horrendous. Look at what we have in the business common, how we have residents complaining that you can't drive around because there's so much congestion at stop signs. Or how the people that work at these businesses are trying to find a place to park. Maybe we should park them behind McCafferty's or behind the businesses. There's not enough parking. That's just a small sample of what could happen when we continuously build and build and build and not have the land or the infrastructure to build that. Why can't we make these districts somewhere in the middle of the woods that would be undesirable for these people? I'm not a zoning expert. I'm not a politician in that type of way of knowing this. But we, but we can make it, put in the woods somewhere where it'd be un, you know, unpopular for someone who want to build there. And be like, well, we gave what you wanted. You don't like it. Oh, well. It just seems that everything is going, let's develop and build so we can get something out of it that maybe I don't know or somebody else doesn't know. So I wish we would just use, you know, what people want, try to better this community and do the best that we can to make this community the best we can and not develop every inch of it. So we have congestion, traffic, police problems that we have to deal with because of all the new congestion and all the new residents that we bring into this area. And on top of all this, I thought when we had the development project try to get proposed next to Wawa, we were told that this township hasn't grown that high, so we don't need any of these high-rise apartment complexes. But maybe I'm wrong, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Almost had a collision there.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Apartments seem to be the thing now. You look at the surrounding communities, building apartments over in the, across the street from Shady Brook, over in Ochs Valley Mall, different places in the area that are building apartments. So that's the thing now. About ten years ago or more, office buildings was the thing. They built a lot of office buildings. And a lot of them are vacant now because they overloaded with office buildings. I see the same thing's going to happen with, with apartments here and there. But, you know, a lot of people like apartments. I know for a fact, a lot of my elderly neighbors or some my age, they want to go to apartments. They don't want the, the care that goes into a house, no matter how big or small. They don't want that. And, you know, they're looking for apartments and they love to stay in Newtown, like a lot of people do. It's funny how people, they said, I'm from Newtown Grant, how people progress. They, they start in condos. They move to townhouse. They get a little, a little higher in their, their work area, a little more money, and they buy a single. All Newtown Grant. They stay in Newtown Grant. That's how nice it is. You know, you drive around the office building. I mean, some people probably never do. But if you look, there's a lot of empty buildings, a lot of, a lot of parking spaces unused, open ground. There's open ground there. So can you fit apartments there? Yes. The object was to put retail and apartments there so to be some life there at night. Right now, there's nothing to like. Last meeting, you just went and approved sidewalks. Why spend the money if you don't want to put anything there and change it? You know, and a comment about employees that work in the business commons can't afford these apartments. How do you know? The CFO for a large chain, we have places in, in Newtown, used to live in Newtown Grant, CFO of a large chain. The CFO of New Jersey Transit, retired, still lives in Newtown Grant. So there are people in the area, and you're saying they can't. How do you know if a guy doesn't have three sources of income and he's got a part-time job in the office at the business commons? How do you know that? You don't know that. Apartments is a good thing for their, you know, retail. Years ago, you didn't want to let restaurants in. Francisco's, everybody loves Francisco. They love it. Nice restaurant. You know, you like Italian food. It's a great restaurant. You know, it's, it's just a thing. You want to stop these people. I mean, somebody brought up Wawa, you know. Wawa was a touchy case because they stuck their foot in the door before the state changed the rules. And then the state changed the rules and made it easier for them. So, you know, you got to look into things. You got to look in the past. Some people don't remember the past. They didn't wake up until they got elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiApril.
Good evening. Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk Community. I have a question. According to the ordinance, is there a cap on how tall the apartment buildings can be? Is it only three stories high that they can be, or is there no cap?
It's fifty feet. Do I have it right? Do I have it right?
So how tall could an apartment go in Newtown Township with that? Well, I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, so I'm trying to understand, would that be higher than three stories?
Oh, you're talking about stories.
Stories, yeah. I thought there was a cap that they couldn't be any taller than three stories high, so that...
Well, you can only fit a certain amount of stories.
You fit a certain amount of stories in 50 feet. You need to have, I don't know, the minimum is per floor, plus there's an area between ceiling and other floors. You can't have...
Would the 50 feet include anything that is put on the roof line in regards to like air conditioning units or things like that?
Building height, building height is inclusive of all rooftop equipment and parapets.
Okay, so technically, the apartments themselves could be 40 feet.
Correct.
And 10 of that feet could be the mechanicals that are put on top, the air conditioning units and so on. So if you have a 40-foot roof line, that would depend on what the ceilings would be on the inside, if they're 10-foot ceilings, that would determine how many stories it would be. But the height would cap out at 50 feet, which would include anything that's put on the roof line in regards to mechanical equipment. So that could be another 10 feet, leaving the actual living space 40 feet.
So the chances of having these monstrosity-tall apartment buildings with that 50-feet cap are not happening, and I think that's important for people to understand. I think particularly for people that are in their late 20s, early 30s, who are being bid out of buying a house, I think some of those people can only afford to rent right now because they've been priced out of the housing market. But I think in order to keep the area looking as beautiful as it looks, once you pass that third level, I just speak from coming from Florida, which is so overdeveloped, believe it or not, that fourth level, that fourth story makes all the difference in the world of how that structure looks. I also think for safety-wise, again, I'm not in the fire department, but I believe it would be even more difficult for a ladder truck to get to people that were on a fourth story as opposed to capping it at the third story. So just a thought, if the apartments are going to come, we should have a limit on it so that it stays within the way Newtown looks and doesn't become more like, you know, a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, the 50-feet height, would that be something similar to what the promenade is right now with the equipment that is put on top of the roof? I think that's...
Right.
Wasn't originally a 40-foot living area, and then the top portion would be, so you're looking at a building example to be that like of the promenade?
Yeah.
Which has, I think, three stories?
Right.
With retail on the bottom.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's probably close to or at 50 feet.
I would guess that a retail establishment would have a higher ceiling generally than an apartment.
Right. Right. So it may only be three stories based on that.
Any other public comment? Any other board comment? Seeing none, I'll call...
Yes. I would just say that we are cognizant of our community and the way they feel about this, and I don't think I'm going out on a limb to say that we feel the same way and would never allow a monstrosity to be built here if we have any say at all. Thanks.
All right. Let me call the question. All those in favor of approving this ordinance for LIOLI, Rovale District, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries 3-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the public hearing.
All right. We have no land development tonight. We go right to our report of officials, and that would start with our engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda we have is to recommend a financial security release for the Flores subdivision. Based upon our inspection of the work completed, we recommend that the township release the amount of $145,685 to the developer from the financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the development.
I have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Do we have any comments from the board? Comments or questions, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the financial security release number two to Flores subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. The second item is to recommend a financial security release for the Provco Pine Good, the Wawa Food Market. Based upon our inspection of the work completed, we recommend that the Newtown Township release the amount of $221,571.65 to the developer from the financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the development.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from the board? I do note that there's $1,777,000 and a little bit more, 104...
Actually, $1,777,000.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Correct, yeah. That's still being held.
Very good. All those, any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the financial security release number one to Provco Pine Good, otherwise known as Wawa, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And finally, we are requesting a motion to authorize the advertisement of bids for the Newtown Township pedestrian upgrades project. As we all know, this project is to provide pedestrian upgrades at the two existing un-signalized intersections in Newtown Township, the intersections of Newtown Yardley Road and Tara Boulevard and Sycamore Street and Silo Drive. The bid documents are in the process of being prepared, and we are looking for the motion to advertise the project for bid.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, sir.
You still have not received the comments from PennDOT regarding the Silo Drive crosswalk, is that correct?
That's correct.
So how could we bid this out without having that already in hand?
We would not, but in anticipation of receiving the approval and having the bid documents prepared before the next supervisors' meeting, that's, we would look for the authorization of it.
But, we have everything we need for the Tara Drive crosswalk project approved.
We have the signal permit approval for that crosswalk, yes.
And why can't we go ahead and proceed with that, having a bird in hand rather than two in the bush? Who knows how long it's going to take PennDOT to come back, whatever, whatever they're coming back with comments and for you guys to act upon it. That's going to further delay two projects instead of just one.
In coordinating with the township, it was always proposed, it's how it was proposed in the grant, to be one project. I think it would behoove the township to do it as one project?
It was proposed in the grant. I don't recall okaying anything like that, that this is one project combined. That escapes me.
Could have been to the state, did the state require it to be all in the grant?
For the grant funds, was the state?
The grant covers two intersections.
Requiring us.
It doesn't require that you do them at the same time, as far as I know. It's just, the grant runs out after a certain time limit, that's all it is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir. Bidding the projects at the same time will yield a better cost result from the contractors.
How's that? Can you explain that?
More quantity.
Because I've been talking to engineers who says it doesn't make a bit of difference. They work on one project at a time in any case.
Because if you get one contractor for two projects, you don't get charged twice for mobilization.
Uh-huh. What is mobilization?
For them to show up on site and do the work.
To drive a truck here, is that what you're talking about?
And equipment and everything else, yes.
Okay.
And I would think there'd be some savings from reviews in the beginning, too, in order to respond to the bid.
Yes. I mean, you're talking about advertising two separate projects, that's preparing two separate bid documents. It just, it seems to make more sense to have this as one project for the two crosswalks.
It just seems to make more sense, but it really doesn't make more sense as far as I'm concerned.
Let me come back, take a step back. The, PennDOT was supposed to have comments to the Silo Drive by August 11th, as I remember, it was Sunday, so it wasn't going to happen on Sunday.
Upon receipt of submission for that signal, they gave us an anticipated review date of August 11th.
So, I mean, they could review it and approve it and get our permit to us tomorrow.
Sure.
So I would like to go ahead and be ready for that eventuality. If it doesn't, I mean, then we're wasting even more time.
Right, so if we receive the motion, or if we receive authorization to bid, once we receive that approval for the Sycamore-Silo signal permit, and we have completed the bid documents, we can advertise this project for bid.
And you're working on the bid documents?
Yes.
And you haven't been slowed down about that yet?
Not yet. I mean, we might get to a point, if we don't hear in the next couple of weeks, but hopefully it's not going to come to that. Again, it was the August 11th was the anticipated review date from PennDOT.
So what you're expecting from PennDOT is a permit to go ahead with the Silo Drive crosswalk improvements?
Correct.
And is there any reason for you to believe that they won't do that? They'll come back and say, "Well, you need to change this and that?"
It's hard to tell. Obviously, we went through a few rounds on the other crosswalk, but, you know, we are confident in what we submitted. It's just sort of out of our hands what they may come back to us with.
And I would just say, why would we want to go through this procedural aspect twice when we can do it once we're ready to go? Just doesn't make sense to separate it out.
Ready to go as soon as PennDOT's ready.
Yeah, and I'll also just add, I mean, we'll obviously be sharing the bid documents before we were to advertise this project for bid with the township for any comments or review.
You see this package here, this book? This is the verbatim of my deposition because of a case at, somebody who was killed at Silo Drive, because we didn't make improvements fast enough.
Mr...
Now we have...
Mr...
We have some...
Mr. Mack, I'd be very careful here.
Well, let me finish. I do not want to sit through another deposition. If there is an accident at Tara Boulevard crosswalk, when we are ready to go ahead, we have everything we need to go ahead with making improvements there. I do not want to do that again. I don't like depositions.
Okay, any more comments, questions from the board? Any from the public? Yeah, we did a motion.
Yeah, motion's answered.
Yeah. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Clabro before?
No, I just wondered, I didn't remember a second.
Yeah, we did. It was two of you at the same time, I think. Mr. Ferr. It's public comment.
Good evening. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. And I believe there are some points of clarification on some statements that have been made that are very important to this. And the first one that comes to mind, that I've reviewed with a number of people, on July 10th, Mr. Kandari clearly stated, and you can go back to the tape, that from the beginning, the Tara and Sycamore Silo projects have been dealt with and worked by his company as our contractor as two separate projects. Also, it was brought up at a previous Board of Supervisors meeting and agreed upon by the board that the timeline is critical on these because public safety, obviously with a death at one site and numerous examples of near at the other, it was agreed by the board that as the permits and the process was completed, they would move forward mutually exclusive of each other. I have spoken to contractors and engineers that have confirmed that with a project like this, and that's why I believe our township engineer deals with them as mutually exclusive, is that there's no economy of scale of bidding the two to one in one bidding process, because they're two separate projects, and there are no economies of scale. That can be verified. But the most important point is that, and I'll go over this timeline as I wrote it down, RVE has clearly stated, and they've given us a timeline, we received the permit a day after the July 10th meeting, and I can clearly state, Mr. Kandari's previous timeline allotments, "Once a permit is received, the ad preparation takes approximately a couple of weeks," were his words. That would mean it should be completed now. July 10th was a month ago. As Mr. Kandari stated, he's been work, RVE has been working on these projects mutually Therefore, the advertising should be completed already. The construction plan should be completed already, and at this meeting, as per permit issued a month ago, the board should be instructing, I believe, and Newtown believes because of the safety issue here, that RVE should be instructed to advertise it. It should take two weeks as per previous RVE statements, and then one month for review of the bids, and then in the October meeting, the bid can be approved, the contract can be written, and construction can start in November. These are all timelines that I have heard RVE give the board and the public. To delay potential death fatalities and harm doesn't seem to make any sense whatsoever. And because there's no economy of scale in bidding the two projects as one, and delaying this further makes absolutely no sense. And those of us that live in Newtown Walk and have been working through the delays of getting the permit for Tara, which was started after Sycamore-Silo, are a clear I don't know if I need to finish that, but I can tell you that the people that I speak to in Newtown are requesting that this advertising and bid for Tara proceed now, because as Mr. Kandari has stated on numerous occasions, he doesn't know when PennDOT is going to approve this. We waited five months for revision to be submitted from previous comments to PennDOT for Tara, and then there was another round. Delaying this makes no sense. The funding is there, the grants have been given. So I appreciate everyone's patience and thoughtfulness, and you can review the previous meeting tapes. Everything I have stated to you is a fact. I reviewed the tapes before I made these statements to you all. Everything I've stated to you is a fact. I reviewed the tapes before I made these statements to you all. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Just some responses, because I just want to clarify a few things. All the discussion for these two intersections at all the previous meetings had been referring to the PennDOT traffic signal plans. There are two separate plans that have been submitted to PennDOT, which require two separate approvals. The, we have not received the second approval for the Sycamore Silo. So when I have mentioned that it would be a couple of weeks once we receive the approvals, that's assuming we have both approvals, which we don't have the second one yet. And I'm looking at the agreement for the ARLE grant, which clearly describes the project is to provide pedestrian upgrades to two existing unsignalized intersections in Newtown Township. So I'm not certain, but I would have to see if this would compromise anything with the grant if we were to do this as two separate projects. And as far as the five months in between reviews, I think we've gone over that a few times. There has not been five months in between RVE's reviews.
Thank you, Mr. Kandari. Sir.
Hi, my name's Al DuFault, Newtown Walk. I have a question regarding the scope of work. I've been up here twice already talking about some improvements beyond the signals that I think would be advantageous to the township to undertake right now since you've got this project underway. Not having had a chance to review these construction drawings yet, and I don't know if we're going to get a chance to do that before it goes out to bid. But I'd like to clarify what's included in the scope of work tonight. And does that include things like the right away, the trimming, tree trimming, and the trees that might be cut down for a line of sight? Is that included in the package so that we know what to expect in terms of some of our landscaping being modified? The second thing was, as I've stated before, I think the sidewalk from the Borough Line to the Cemetery is a hazardous condition. And I'd like to know if you've included in your package the building of a new sidewalk and some curving along that line of road to help protect people walking towards Newtown Center and along the trail. It's the perfect opportunity, perfect time to do it. And is, I don't know if it's the Newtown Highway Department that's got to review that, or whether it would fall under the grant. So I'm asking that you consider doing that sort of work while we're digging up this road and massive constructions going on, and with all the interruption that's going on with the crosswalks. The third thing too is I know a lot of our residents anticipate that these new poles will have the decorative design such as the Borough did at the Lincoln Highway intersection. So I'd like to know, is that all included in this construction package? Even the permit drawings, turn this over or identify it as a township responsibility, not PennDOT's responsibility, to look at the curving work and the tree trimming and all this line of sight business. It's really up to the township. That's all.
I can, I think I can answer one of them, that the decorative poles are part of the grant.
Correct. The decorative poles, it will be an add, a bit alternate to the bidding, to the project. We're uncertain what the cost would be, and in this way, we can have it as a separate bid, review it. And if we want to move forward with the decorative poles, then we have that right. How about some of the other?
And the curbing is not part of the plan?
There's no curb, there's no sidewalk on Newtown Yardley. And the tree trimming, I think we've answered before too. If we deem the tree trimming necessary, that's something we can work out, I believe, with the DPW. It will not be part of the project.
But that could be handled another way. I would suggest that we look at the curbing. I've drive by there a lot, and there is, it could benefit, that side of the road could benefit from a curb. But that would have to be another project. Am I thinking at this point?
Well, my name's Mark Bjorkman.
Turn it on.
Oh, my name's Mark Bjorkman. I live at Newtown Walk also. I was wondering if anybody on this council knew who Peter Garing was? So he was the gentleman who was killed, pedestrian who was killed five days ago in Bucks County, crossing at an intersection. If you haven't seen the news, I'll submit this so that you can all read it. In Cellerville in Bucks County, he was killed August 9th. So that's the price of delay.
Thank you.
Valerie Mahalik, also from the Newtown Walk community. You know, I have to say, this is just beyond infuriating. We brought our children here, I brought my children here, Randy brought his grandchildren here. This problem does not go away. I live at the front of the community, and I'm going to tell you, even though we've reduced the speed limit, nobody's following it. And I constantly hear brake screeching or see people in the, even in where the refuge area is, afraid to move forward either way. And I think Supervisor Mack has an excellent point. If someone gets injured there, God forbid killed, like with what just happened to this gentleman, it's going to be on your hands. We came here over two years ago with children. Two of them were hit, well, their father was hit in the crosswalk, three years ago. He moved his two children out of the way. The driver said, "I couldn't see you," because of all the reasons we have defined, line of sight, glare, everything. It is just beyond infuriating. You know, the township engineer, you know, he sort of came midway through this process. But we have provided everything to help you, from grants to money to having you come there. And to hear that now, we have to wait even further. So now we're probably looking at 2025. And I will tell you, if anyone from our community gets injured, it's on you.
Hi, Charles Foyer again. And in light of some comments made by Mr. Kandari after I was previously here, I believe he read the ARLE grant statement that says the grant was made for two projects. It doesn't say they're dependent on each other. The funding is there for both projects. By way of applying for the funds, they were applied for as two separate projects, and they were approved, and the funding is there. Is that correct?
Would you like me to answer?
Yes. Right. We'll get you an answer to that, Charlie.
Okay. And the second question was, since July 10th or July 11th, when the permit was issued by PennDOT for the Tara Newtown Yardley Crosswalk, it appears from Mr. Kandari's comments that no work has been done on the advertising in order to have it ready for approval because RVE has taken the position they will wait until the permit is issued for Sycamore and Silo. Is that correct? Have we lost another month that could?
I can answer that. They've been working on the bid project, the bid packet. And it'll be ready when we get the permit from PennDOT. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, we haven't gotten the second approval from PennDOT yet. We can't advertise the project if we don't, we're not done with the bid documents.
We'll have it ready to advertise because you have been working on the bid.
We have been working on the bid documents since the July 11th date.
Yes.
That was the approval for the Sycamore or the Tara Drive and Newtown Yardley Signal Permit.
Correct.
We don't have the approval for the Sycamore Silo. This project has always been proposed as one construction project, which is how we have been proceeding. We can't advertise, we can't make our plans 100% without the approval from PennDOT on the Sycamore Silo Signal Permit.
Okay, that's clearly the opposite of what you said on July 10th. I suggest you review your tape. Two separate projects by RVE from the start.
Two separate submittals to PennDOT for the Signal Permit Plans. Yes, correct.
Therefore, could be advertised and put out to bid separately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Mm-hmm.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
We have a motion here that clearly I'm not, you know, happy about, let's say. Is there a way to get a new motion that would just say, and I'm not sure people would vote for it or not, but would just say, "Let's do the Tara Drive advertisement bid first."
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and that is the motion that should and must be considered prior to the making of any other motion.
Well, would the proper procedure be a motion to table that motion for now?
You could make a motion to table that motion, yes.
So that we could possibly discuss a new motion such as I suggested.
You are free to make a motion to table that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Let me finish. It would require a second, it would require a majority of...
I understand that.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to table this motion that we have so that we can consider at least another motion that would allow us to bid on the Tara Boulevard Crosswalk immediately. And that's my motion.
Your motion, is there a second? Seeing that there's no...
That's what I thought. Crickets. Thank you.
Very good. The motion to table dies for lack of a second, and the original motion is before the board.
Understood. All right. Seeing no other comments? I'll call the question. Okay.
Got it. Randy Edgington, Newtown Walk resident as well. This board has gone through the steps to approve things like Capital Grill coming in here now. It's going to open very, very soon. It's going to increase traffic flow from the bypass on Washington Road into the Borough and for people who have never even been here before. And so all of this should have been done well before all these other approvals were made. I implore you to get this thing moving, and let's get this done.
Thank you. All right, seeing other comments, call the question. All those in favor of soliciting, authorizing and soliciting of bids for Newtown Township pedestrian upgrades, say aye.
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 I'm going to have to say aye because I do want to move this forward. And I understand that there's going to be a delay. And I just hope I don't have to do another deposition. Thank you very much.
So that was an aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. And we will continue to work on it. I will say some prayers that it happens sooner than later. All right. There was a monthly packet, monthly report in the packet. Was there any questions about the monthly report? Okay, good.
Happy to answer any questions.
We got it. No questions. All right, that brings us to Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. First item on our report is consideration by the board of adopting a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Council Rock School District. This was brought to us from the Chief of Police. This is a memorandum of understanding that memorializes the agreement between the township and the school district for the township to provide two school resource officers, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and then to have the officers provide rotational coverage at the district's elementary schools within Newtown as needed. This is an intergovernmental agreement because it's between the township and the school district, both governmental entities, and thus must be adopted by resolution. If the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Council Rock School District for the school resource officers.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Any comments from the board? You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any, now, is there any discussion from the board? Any from the public? So if I heard you write the Northampton's increasing their, they would be increasing their resource officer and maybe increasing our resource officer.
That's correct. Thank you. I didn't know the answer to that question. Chief's here if you have any questions.
Yes, sir. I have a motion and a second.
Very good. So any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting the resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Council Rock School District, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Second item is consideration to authorize the township manager to sign a mutual aid agreement for emergency services with the Eastern Montgomery County Mutual Aid Group. Again, the chief presented this to us. Newtown participates in this, is composed mostly of Eastern Montgomery County municipalities, but Newtown has participated in it in the past. And according to the chief, finds it to be very, very helpful. These folks have their stuff together, as it were. It would be appropriate for the board to consider a motion to authorize the execution of this agreement.
Is it, okay, a motion, maybe a second?
Second.
Second, okay, very good. Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those who wish to authorize the township manager to sign the Eastern Montgomery County Mutual Aid Agreement for Emergency Services, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Next item is considering sending the electric vehicle charging station, J M Z O Amendment Ordinance, back to the jointure for advertising. The board will recall at your last meeting, the Planning Commission, the Newtown Planning Commission, recommended that the electric vehicle charging station ordinance be sent back to the jointure with a positive recommendation for advertising. That would require a motion to authorize sending it back to the jointure to advertise.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Any further questions from the board? Any from the public? I know we've been through this several times with the EV ordinance. So let me call the question. All those in favor of sending the EV charging station ordinance back to the jointure for advertising, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is consideration of sending the LIOLI Ordinance Overlay District Amendment, which makes the uses by right, which you enacted earlier this evening, uses by conditional use approval, back to the jointure for advertising. Again, you heard Ms. Driscoll this evening recommend that course of action. And a motion would be appropriate to send that ordinance back to the jointure to request advertising.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second? All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I'm just a bit confused. You said that what we're voting on here is to send the overlay amendment with the conditional use?
Yes.
Definition?
Just what you want.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's the only thing that was changed, and it was from by right to...
That's correct.
Of the mixed use in the town... Of the mixed use and the town, mixed use.
Yep.
And the.
Yeah, it's, there's mixed use, mixed use development and town center apartments are the two new uses and as of this second, they are uses by right, but we're changing that.
Yes. All right. I've confused things enough already. All right. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of sending the L I O L I Overlay District Amendment to the jointure for advertising, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is consideration by the board of an amendment to the manager's employment agreement regarding the provision for the manager of a vehicle rather than paying him a vehicle allowance each month. It would require a motion to approve the amendment to employment agreement with the township manager.
Is there a motion, have a motion, I'll second that. Have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion from the board? Seeing none, do we have any questions from the public? I'll call the question. All those who approve the employment agreement amendment with the township manager, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And finally, we have one zoning hearing board application being heard by the zoning hearing board on September 5th, 2024. This is the application of MUN's Construction on behalf of Mr. Chicalini at 425 Mahogany Walk. He wants to construct a deck that requires relief from the side yard setback and rear yard setback. Does the board wish to take a position on this matter? And hearing crickets, we will assume no, and that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $7,244. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. This evening we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members.
First off, I'd like to thank the board for supporting the second SRO and the Monco Emergency Management Agreement. Appreciate your support.
You're welcome.
July 2024 police report, we documented 2,551 calls for service, logged just under 25,000 miles on our patrol fleet. For the month of July, we had 11 arrests, which included two assaults, two wanted persons, three frauds, three narcotics possessions and one DUI. There were eight new cases referred to detectives for investigation and one crime team processed, some of which included an arson, frauds, thefts and two trial line investigations. There were 65 traffic crashes for the month, 16 reportable, 28 non-reportable, two property damage, eight hit runs and 11 deer collisions. There were 239 traffic citations issued and 292 warnings issued. We conducted truck enforcement details on two locations, resulting in 16 inspections, five citations, four warnings, four vehicles investigations and one vehicle was towed. Notable jobs for the month of July. On 7/6, there was a shooting in Benzam resulting in a homicide. As a result of flash information in our current new ALPR located at Bridge Borough in a bypass, that vehicle was identified and stopped at Newtown Yardley Road and the male was apprehended and officially charged with homicide, probably within 30 minutes of the homicide. On 7/7, we had a mental health subject threatening to harm himself with a butcher knife to his throat, de-escalation by Corporal Resta and the male was placed in custody and administered proper treatment. Public service announcements, fraud on the elderly. Pay attention to your parents, your grandparents, elderly neighbors, watch your phone solicitations and don't give out your personal information over the phone or the computer to anybody you do not know. Malthefts are continuing. I strongly encourage you to use the mailbox inside the post office. Don't even put it in your home mailbox outside with the flag up because they are stealing mail. We pursued a subject two times last month and he fled the area in a, probably a stolen car. So just keeping in mind. August, Grange Fair is going on, started today through the 18th. Stop up and see, our officers will be working at that event, both directing traffic and a community relations tent. The co-responder program, the regional one for Upper Mayfield, ourselves and Newtown Borough, was officially hired and she is actually working in the area. And finally, I'd like to thank Platinum Suites Kylie Buffy from 12 Penns Trail for the donation of our newest police tent for our community outreach efforts. The architectural firm submitted the plans to the board, the board has them for review. I look forward to that, digging the dirt. Thank you, be happy to answer any question you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I just have a comment. I see that retail thefts, there were five last month for a total of 34 year to date versus 23 in 2023, I believe. So retail thefts are up and I note that one in recently was at Lululemon and it occurred at 6:00 PM. It's not like they're sneaking around, they're doing it right at a busy time of the day. So I don't know. Your arrest record of the homicide suspect was great news, but I know it's hard to find these thieves who steal from retail stores, so.
Our department's actually pretty effective. We have two, two locations within a shop and center that get hit often. We take proactive measures for periodic checks at that location. We use our decoy cars there as well and we communicate with other jurisdictions that have the same stores in their particular area, so we're usually in front of it. But they know if they come to Newtown and they're arrested, they will be sent up to Bucks County Prison. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. That's all we have on our report, Mr. Chairman.
Did you say there was anything about the plan expiration? I just missed it.
Yes, it was in the report, no actions required.
Okay. I missed the no action required. Mr. Secretary, Treasurer, do you have minutes in bills list force?
Oh, yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 10, 2024 Board of Supervisors minutes, but with one minor, minor correction, there's a Carla Jones spelled with a C A R L A, it should be a K, just so that people, we get their names straight. That's the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Nice catch, I didn't see that. Any from the public? Call the question, all those in favor of approving the minutes of July 10, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain.
I caught that because I know the person, so.
Yeah, 301.
All right. Regarding the July 26, 2024 bills list, I make a motion to approve paying those bills totaling I hope I'm getting these numbers correct. I checked it twice.
That sounded right. I had my computer shut down already. All those in favor, do we have a motion to, we have a motion, do we have a second? We gave a motion and a second to approve the bills list of July 26th. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Again, all those who wish to pay the bills of the July 26, 2024 bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Same bills list, but approve the funds transfer of $717,443.18.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? All those in favor of paying the inter-fund transfers as of the bills list from July 26th, right?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, now we have to move on to the August 14, 2024 bills list.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the bills totaling $459,603.37.
Have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion from the board?
I just have one question, maybe if involves the chief. There's a charge on page three of $3,275.59 for giveaway items. Is that something you're going to give away at the Grange Fair?
Yes, sir.
Are there going to be any like rubber duckies maybe that you give away?
Nah, they're on the front hood of your car, sir. They're already on your.
I need a few more though. Okay, thanks, chief. That's my only comment.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the August 14, 2024 bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 31.
Finally, I move that we approve the funds transfer of $22,844.94 as per the August 14, 2024 bills list.
Have a motion, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers as listed on the bills list of August 14, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. That brings us to our second round of public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the, to the microphone and give us your name once more.
Hello, Bradley Cooper, again, Newtown Grant resident since 1999. And it's going to be something a lot more light, not as heavy as what we had today, but I just wanted to announce to everyone who doesn't know, congratulations to the Newtown Little League for making the Little League World Series. I have no affiliation with them, but I just saw on Facebook that the Green Parrots are going to have a watch party tomorrow at 7 o'clock if you want to watch them with a bunch of other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Very civic minded, very cool. Okay. Any, no other public comments? Do we have any old business this evening? Any new business? No need for an executive session?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so without objection, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.